Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I do like how that sounds with a room full of people. We're not used to that. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Spurling, here. Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz.
Yank.
Trustee Youngerman.
Here.
Trustee Marisak.
Here.
And trustee Bond.
Here.
All right, we're all here this evening. We'll move on to public comment. This is the two-minute opportunity that any member of the public has to address the board on any topic, whether it's on the agenda or not. I believe that there are folks here this evening to address concerns about dogs and dog attacks and dog bites. So that is not on our agenda for discussion, so we won't be talking about it. But there's nothing that prohibits you from addressing the board about that if you wish. You certainly don't have to. So is there any member of the public? Yeah, if there's any member of the public, if you can just write your name down and your address.
We did.
Perfect.
So can we go in order as well, excuse me?
Whatever you like.
Now yourself on?
Yep. I usually don't time these. It's supposed to be two minutes, but... So just try and keep it to that if you can.
Hi, my name's Kathy Zulick. I've lived in Montgomery for about 15 years. And I did email the board and I got an email from the Administrator... Administrative Assistant Tula Coffey that said, "We are going to be discussing this tonight at the village board meeting." So this is probably why a lot of people are here. Anyways, I'm getting going here. The first comment I need to make is I need to apologize to you, Steve. I think you got a raw deal in the newspaper. And I read that first. And you said "attack" six times. You never said "bite." I don't agree with some of the other things you said. But I do apologize to you because that's not what you said and you did get a raw deal, I think.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So I have a couple of questions on old business, which was the discussion from the June 12th about the dog and the dog attacks. Sorry. I looked at the code in Montgomery and it doesn't appear that there's a two-bite rule anywhere. There's in section B of 4.9. There talks about an animal attacking in one year and then another year. If it's eight attacks in the same year. Most of my comments about this, and I think we talked about it and Chief had said that we're looking into revising it, is that it's too vague. Who decides if a dog attacks or bites? Who decides if a dog gets euthanized? Who decides what an injury is or what a bite is or what an attack is? Who decides whether it's provoked or unprovoked? I don't have big dogs, but if you come into my house, my dog might nip you in the back of the shins, you know, so... And that's provoked him because that's his place. So I think that's one of the things that we need to talk about when you do talk about that. And then define "abated." That's another word in there twice. And in the dictionary, it means several different things, all the way to destruction. So it could mean asking the owners to be... Get them into, like, classes. That's what I took it out of it. And I guess the other thing is I think there's a lot of dog people here and ones that couldn't come that would like to be on a board. I work for a rescue. I'm not perfect. I don't know everything about a dog, but I know probably a little bit more about than the average bear. And I think there's some people here that work for the rescues and the animal shelters in the area that would say, "Hey, you know, we'd like to work together on making it a better law for everybody so that nobody gets bit." And that people... I mean, even some of us would talk to parents and family groups about how to teach your kids about... About how to approach dogs and how to approach your own dog. I mean, my granddaughter was bit in the face by her own dog. But that's on them because she grabbed the dog and did a selfie with him. He bit her. I mean, it's not that dog's fault. It's the parent's fault. So I think that's all I have to say. I'm hoping that you guys are working on this and finding solutions other than euthanizing after a first attack, whatever that word means. And I personally would be available to be on those committees if you wanted.
Awesome. Thank you, Kathy. All right.
Hi, my name is Lynn Stacy Smith and I'm a dog blogger and the author of a book about responsible dog ownership. I've also had the joy of living in Montgomery for the last 10 years. At first I was, "Where's Montgomery?" And my husband already owned our house. So I love this town and I want to see it getting better and continuing to be a great place to live. I had some definite concerns when I read the article. And again, I... My New Jersey native, my Jersey girl, got out and I really went after you and I apologize. And I think the author of that article owes you an apology, too, besides those of us who reacted strongly. I know that the proposed change is in reaction to a specific incident. I'm actually the wife of a Naperville firefighter, so I don't want to see our police attacked by dangerous dogs. I don't want to see our firefighters or our children or anyone. I also don't want my two beloved Labrador Retrievers attacked by dangerous dogs. So I won't dispute that there are dangerous dogs. But those dogs were failed by their owners. They were failed when their owners did not socialize them, when they did not teach them bite inhibition. They were failed by their owners who may have promoted their aggression either accidentally by being ignorant dog owners, doing things like tethering them and not knowing how to train a dog and correctly care for one. Or they did it intentionally because they want their dog to be bad or a protector. In my life, I protect my dogs. They don't protect me. We set the ADT so no one steals them, vice versa. The only way you're getting bit in my house is if you're, you know, a bully stick. But all joking aside, I think that the proposal... I think the reason we all have reacted so strongly is there's simply too much of a risk of innocent dogs falling under such a rule. Because there's so... There are just so many variables. So as Kathy said, there would need to be clear-cut rules and process and procedure and experts on what constitutes an attack, what makes a dangerous dog. Because we don't want someone's... You know, I was bit when I was a little girl because I hugged my parent... One of my grandparents' Shetland sheepdog. And I didn't tell anyone because I thought, "Oh, I think I did something wrong, not the dog." And I don't want innocent dogs like that to be put to death. In the same way, you don't want to tell a parent that their child has been killed by an unfortunate and dangerous dog. We also don't want to tell dog owners that their dogs were put to death because of an accident or a misunderstanding. So I won't take much more time, but I actually did some research today in between my own Labrador vomiting all over the house. And I found an interesting group called the Lifeline Animal Project. They're based out of Atlanta, Georgia, and they are doing a lot of proactive measures. One thing is that a lot of dog bites and aggressive dogs, dangerous dogs, are from low-income areas. And in fact, two weeks ago, there was a discussion about some of the people who we don't want in our community who have moved in and who are committing crimes and whatnot. And I really think by addressing those things, we help keep the dangerous dogs out of the community. So these are some ideas. I printed out eight copies, one for every board member, on things like responsible owner education, low-cost spay and neuter, going out into the schools and teaching about dog safety in the schools. I would be happy to go and speak to children about responsible behavior around dogs. So regardless of the ordinance and the future of the ordinance, I think those would be fabulous ideas for the village anyway to make us more dog-friendly.
Absolutely.
So, thank you.
All right. And what we'll do is probably digest all the information while everybody's talking. And at the end, I'll probably have a few members of staff respond, and I'm sure some of the board will respond as well.
Hi. So good evening. My name is Nicole Barron and I'm here tonight to address the no-second-chances proposal regarding the dog bites in the village. I want to give you guys a little history about me. I've been breeding... Well, I've lived in the village for 16 years. I've been breeding, showing, campaigning, and training some of the top Dobermans in the country and in South America for those past 16 years that I've been here, but actually my entire life. So I have a good insight into dog behavior. I also have certified therapy dogs. So the same dogs that go into the show ring go into the VA, local hospitals, and do reading programs with kids. So, you know, but they're still Dobermans. So, you know, big dogs could bite. So this affects us greatly. You know, there's many factors that go into dog bites, more than you can count. Fear, defensiveness, a dog being startled, poor socialization, displaced aggression. You know, you could have dog-on-dog aggression. Somebody goes to break it up and on accident, the dog turns and accidentally gets the person trying to break up that dog fight. You know? So there's all different kinds of things that can cause a dog bite. I can tell you, I got bit playing with a toy. It was accidental. The dog didn't really bite me, but kind of caught me with a tooth. I was playing with the toy. I grabbed the ball up. She jumped up and I got snagged. It's unfortunate. It happened. It wasn't a vicious bite. But if that had been a neighbor kid, you know, that parent could have reported my dog. And now my dog's deemed vicious or a liability. And really, she's a therapy dog because she goes into the schools and does reading with the kids during the day. So, you know, it's just something that we need to think about, that there's a lot of reasons that a dog can bite. Bites and attacks can be one and the same. I know we like to use different terminology, but the act of biting could be an attack and it could just be an accident. So we need to remember that, too, when we're putting terminology into some of these proposals. By enacting a no-second-chance policy, the village is deeming dogs vicious or aggressive. And that's not always the case like we just talked about. So we need to be really careful about that. The other thing is that the policy could really have a negative repercussion for our village. You know, we don't want to be that village that does breed-specific legislation or that does vicious dog legislation. It's just not what we want to be about. We should be treating every incident on its own merit. So every... So every dog bite needs to be investigated correctly if it's reported. And it needs to be investigated by people who know what they're looking at. Okay? That's really important. Somebody that understands dog behavior. So I would urge the board to take a step back, kind of consult with some people that really understand dog behavior, understand what these bites and what these acts of viciousness are all about. I would be willing to help you. I know many of these people would be willing to help you and give you insight. I evaluate rescue dogs for placement, so I can, you know, really kind of help with that a little bit. And I just think that we also need to look at the state of Illinois statutes that are already in place. We have an animal control act in place. And it gives the guidelines for vicious dogs and aggressive dogs and what needs to be done in those cases to handle specific bites. And I think that we need to look at Illinois statute before we start reinventing the wheel. So, thank you guys for your time.
Okay. My name is Dominique Castillo. I'm a professional dog groomer of 11 years. I've lived here my entire life. I have a background as a kennel technician, former volunteer with the Humane Society of Aurora as well as many other rescue organizations. And I am now on the board of a newly-found organization called Renko Animal Shelter. Actually, one of the things that we do is go out and educate the public about being responsible pet owners. Lost my spot. I live right on the border of Oswego and Montgomery. I've lived in both towns my entire life. I love living here. And I really would like to see this ordinance really be worked with, not only on a government level, but reach out to some of the people here. These ladies have made some very excellent points and given you some really excellent resources to use. Reading that article, it frightened me. Taking a step back and reading it again, I could tell it's a bit biased. And I understand you got to kind of take that with a grain of salt. But I feel it's my duty, as well as my colleagues' duty, to educate you on some of the facts and opinions on this matter. A one-and-done, even on a case-by-case basis, is inhumane. Like she already touched on it. It's really got to be the individual situation. Our country has had an epidemic ongoing for quite some time, and the epidemic is irresponsible dog ownership. And we don't really do much about it. It's constantly pinned on the animal. It's been ongoing for as long as I've been alive. I don't recall anything ever happening to a dog owner when there's an incident like this. They get a slap on the wrist and the dog gets put down, and I don't think that's very fair and I don't think it's ethical. They'll just go out and get another dog anyway and the cycle repeats itself. We witness this in dog rescue every day. People come to the shelter, Aurora Animal Control, dump their dog. Six months later, they're dumping another dog. It's our job to fix the problems that they created for that dog. And nothing happens to them. They can come in, dump them, wash their hands with it, and then we have to clean up the mess. And we do turn these dogs into sound, adoptable dogs. It is possible. Can we save them all? No, unfortunately, we can't. And that's why it needs to be on a strictly case-by-case basis. I myself have adopted dogs that have bitten. I've adopted two small dogs that were deemed child-aggressive at Aurora Animal Control. I have a newborn and I have a six-year-old. And they all live in harmony. It's doable. Placing financial cost on the owner, I think, is extremely important. And I think it's a big step to stopping this cycle. I think higher fines need to be tacked on. And I think that some sort of rehabilitation program needs to be put into place. If your dog is constantly getting out, if your dog is constantly a problem, neighbors are complaining, I don't know if it's possible, but if there could be some sort of mandatory training that that dog has to go through and that owner has to sign off on it, we have local trainers in the area that you could contract with. This is easily doable. Montgomery should be known as a compassionate and humane town, not a town that is having a knee-jerk reaction to an ongoing problem of people not containing or training their pets. Just because a dog bites once does not warrant someone... Someone with zero animal experience to demand that they be put down. We need to take a step back, consult with people who actually work with animals day in and day out, like almost everyone in this room, and be proactive and not reactive. I understand that we have animal control officers. I don't want them getting bit. I don't want Kendall County sheriffs getting bit. I don't want anyone getting bit. But I feel like they need a bit more training as well, as far as dog body language. They get often put in really bad scenarios going into people's homes. I think it's really important and it should be put into, when you go through training, to be a police officer, to be an animal control officer. I feel like they just get the bare minimum. I don't think it's enough. I think it needs to be beefed up. And I think you need to consult with some dog professionals that can get you those resources to make sure it's a successful training. They don't care enough, either. These people with these dogs don't care. So punishing the dog does nothing. They're just going to go out and they're going to do it again. And I don't want to live in a town that is known to not place accountability on its citizens and instead is placing the accountability on the animals. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Hi, you guys. My name is Cheryl Estahoe. I am a veterinarian over at Orchard Road Animal Hospital. I've been a veterinarian for 15 years over there and I have a lot of experience with that. So to call myself a dog lover, well, let's be honest, that would be putting it mildly. The problem is with this, dogs communicate differently. Dogs do not communicate like people. And we're trying to put how dogs communicate into our terms, and that's not fair. So I have probably been bitten more than probably all of you put together. Has there been a reason for it? Probably 99 times out of 100. Do you have that one dog who's just... Maybe not the nicest dog? Yes. But each of the dogs, mainly it has been fear, it has been pain, there has been some reason that the dog has reacted. Now, has the dog warned me? Absolutely. I don't always have the choice to not work with the dog, but the dog has either shown me it has, put its tail down, it has put its ears back. Do they all growl? No. Some of them growl, a lot of them don't. But they have told me. And sometimes I have to push and then the dog is like, "Look, I warned you. I have no other choice. I'm going to bite." And that's how dogs react. That's how they communicate. They cannot yell. They cannot say, "Hey, stop it. I have been trying to do that. Now, stop it, stop it, stop it." That's what's happening. The problem is, too, dogs, they have this natural instinct. And they're not... They're not stuffed animals. They're not these things we can carry around and we can just toss around. Dogs have instincts. And some of these instincts are to protect. And so I have two of the best dogs in the world and I have two children. And somebody, if I am there, they can come into my house. My dogs will not hurt them at all. If somebody comes into my yard with my kids and they act in a menacing way towards my kids, there is a good chance my dog will protect those... My children. And that is just going to happen. If it happens to bite someone, when they have probably given every warning to this person under the sun, they have probably growled, they have probably given body language, they have been telling them to get away and they have not, should they be put down because they bite? I don't think that's fair. I don't think that's fair for doing what we have bred them to do, what we have raised them to do. They are our family members. Family members fight. Family members do everything. These are our family. So these people have made some excellence points about the laws. And I would hate to think that we are a one-and-done for dogs being dogs, for dogs trying to tell us what's happening and for dogs doing this. Do bites hurt? Absolutely. You want to see some scars? I'll show you some scars. Okay, it hurts. But a dog shouldn't lose its life because of that, because of something that it was just meant to be. And that's what I worry about so much.
Thank you, Cheryl. Is there any other member of the public that wishes to address the board? Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Jordan Fell. I've lived in Illinois for about seven years now. I am from Detroit, Michigan, or the area, which, you know, you've all heard about Detroit area. It's not the greatest place to live. I've seen a lot of very aggressive animals. I won't even say dogs, it's animals. I've seen aggressive guinea pigs. It's ridiculous. Coming from the place that I did, the area that I lived in had a very large crime rate. It had a very large drug problem. It had a very large poverty problem. You're really looking at a place that isn't a great place to live for anybody, for people or for animals. People will put animals in a position that they wouldn't put themselves in. They feel that animals aren't worth it. I have seen my own home, which I obviously don't have anymore, turned into a dogfighting ring. It is the most depressing and sad thing you'll ever see. Sorry. To see a giant pit bull, or any animal, really, in my own backyard that I grew up in, bleeding or barking because it's scared, is painful. Sorry. I know we're beating a dead horse here. You've heard a lot of us say the same exact thing over and over, but this is how important it is to us. Our animals, our dogs, our cats, mean so much to us. They are our family members, whether, you know, you want to call us, you know, pet moms or dog moms or whatever, parents. That's how much they mean to us. When you look at a dog that's scared or is put in a position that it never wanted to be in, it's like putting a person in the same exact position. If you're cornered, you're going to react. If you feel in danger, if you are scared, you are going to react. That's what they're doing. I have had a lot of dogs. I've had a lot of different dogs. I've had Sharpeays, which are typically deemed as aggressive occasionally. I've had Huskies. I've had a Samoyed, most friendly dog I've ever owned. I now have a dog who is a Great Pyrenees Lab mix. She is the sweetest thing on the earth. I love her to death. But she is very wary of people because of how she was raised. She is a rescue from Kentucky. They found her litter very young, but they were very abused. My dog loves me. She loves my family to death. But if you come up on me fast, she's going to get scared. She's going to stand in front of me. She's going to make some noises that, you know, might scare most people, but she's not going to bite you. If you were to come at me, she's probably going to do something to save me or protect me as she feels that she should. I've never owned a dog like this. I understand how she's acting. I understand now that I am a volunteer with the Humane Society that not every dog is the same. Every dog, like it's been said, has a certain body language. They don't always bark. They don't always growl. They don't always show their teeth. But there is some sort of indicator for them. They should not be treated all of the same. There are countless issues across the country with this kind of thing and I don't want to see them all be put in the same basket because there are so many things that lead to this situation. You're, you know, into someone's backyard that you don't live in or you don't notice a dog in that backyard and you're just jumping in to get something. Well, you're now in that dog's territory and they don't know who you are. You're aggressively knocking on a door. I've had people try and pull on my door where I live now in Elburn, for whatever reason, and my dog will kind of go crazy. They are the most lovable things. They really are. And I don't want to see every dog be put in a situation that they don't deserve to be in. We all understand the concern for safety. Nobody ever wants to see anybody get bit for any reason. But sometimes, one, it can be avoidable, depending on what's going on. I don't want to see our officers get bit. I've worked with officers in the past. I really am going to school to be an officer. And in that position, I don't want to get bit either. I don't want to come do a call to, you know, to try to help somebody and have to worry about the dog that's there. But at the same time, we can't always overreact and see a dog and automatically think it's going to be aggressive or it's going to come after me because that's not always the case. We absolutely need to have owners held completely responsible. That's what it is. Nine times out of ten, when I've seen an aggressive dog, it has a very aggressive, abusive owner. Not always the case. Sometimes it is just the dog, but it can be the owner. It's usually the owner. We need to make sure that people understand how to take care of a dog, how to train the dog. It shouldn't always be, "Well, this dog bit somebody." It needs to be muzzled or put down. That's not always the case. I have my dog. She's great, but she's very rambunctious. She has bitten me before. I have been bitten by dogs that are in, like it was expressed, in a dog fight or fighting over a toy and you go to grab it or you go to break up a dog fight. You're now in their area. That is, you know, you're trying to break up a fight where, you know, you try to break up a bar fight, you're probably going to get hit. So it can't be every single case is the same. We don't want to see that happen. Again, we understand the huge safety concern. I understand that. There's always going to be a safety concern. But we don't want to see every dog be put in a situation that they don't deserve to be in. So hopefully, I rambled a little bit. I apologize, but this really means so, so much to us that we can't deem every dog in the same group as an aggressive dog. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Is there anyone else? All right.
I've got a few remarks if I may.
Just one second. Wait for her to finish. Give a little summary and then I'll let everybody speak because I know a lot of people have a lot to say. I do want to apologize to everybody that this is not on the agenda for this evening. Apologize for the confusion there. It wasn't on our agenda and so we weren't set to talk about this. The other thing that I did want to highlight is that there currently is no proposal in front of the board. I know that each trustee is entitled to his or her own opinion on a matter and we express that from time to time. And so that's why we're here. I can also say that staff is looking at our current ordinance. So two things I wanted to say was, there is the policy aspect of it, which is the legal recourse that we have. And then there's the public relations portion. But I think all of us in this room can really help develop some program that would be good for our residents in that avenue. But staff is currently looking at the policy portion. What we can do, we're a non-home-rule community, so we do have to follow the state statutes that are on the books. And so we're reviewing those now with our attorney and our police department. I think they were reviewing those before the comments were made to tweak that ordinance and we do that from time to time to clarify, as some of them are quite old. And so that will come back before the board for discussion and potentially action at some point in the future. To my knowledge... To my knowledge, there isn't a provision on the books regarding a certain number of bites rule. They try as best they can to look at things on a case by case, but at the same time, we have to treat everybody fairly in those situations. So, I certainly understand why everybody's concerned, your animal is part of your family. I think the majority of board members here are dog owners, if I'm not incorrect. So we understand and support that, right? There's a lot that we can do. Does staff have anything else to add before I turn it over to the board, because I know trustee Youngerman had stuff? Okay.
First off, I'd like to say thank you for coming out. Thank you for the apologies. You're right, it was a poorly written article. I sit here and I listen to each one of you, and I want you to know that I understand what you're saying, I'm hearing what you're saying. I think it's important that we figure something out, work together. The comments that I made at the last meeting were related to unprovoked attacks on a code enforcement officer and a police officer. In response, in, related to the code enforcement officer, the code enforcement officer was in a neighbor's yard, and the dog jumped over the fence into the neighbor's yard and attacked the code enforcement officer, having attacked two people previously in the months prior to that. That code enforcement officer received approximately 15 stitches and may have permanent nerve damage in his arm. The police officer received eight stitches, and the pit bull, and it just happened to be a pit bull, I don't believe that there are bad dogs or bad dog owners, but unfortunately, sometimes the dogs pay for the bad owner's decisions. But as far as the pit bull grabbed onto the police officer's arm, he has eight stitches now. And what happened was, there was a call, a concerned family across the street had called because they had kids, and apparently this, it was a second pit bull or whatever was out. The police officer knocked on this door, and the homeowner couldn't contain the second dog, and it came straight for the police officer and charged the police officer directly in the chest, but he turned and it grabbed onto his arm as well. This is an unprovoked attack as well. I think my words were taken out of context in the article that was written. If you're an intruder and you go into someone's house, you get what you deserve. As far as I'm concerned, you get what you deserve. If you're playing in your yard and someone, you know, I, people may think I've never owned a dog. I've owned three or four of them. You know, I put my last one down about three years ago because she was 18 years old and couldn't walk anymore, and it broke my heart. I understand, because I've been knit before playing with the dog, where you're playing, or you're playing rough or whatever, I mean, it's just like a brother or a sister, you know, you're messing around with them. I get that. But we've got to come to some sort of solution, and I invite you, I will let you guys know when we're discussing this, that way you can all come back, you can all be part of the discussion. But we've got, we have to come to some sort of resolution where, at a certain point, something's got to be done. Because as I put in my response to that article, I'm not going to be the village board member that tells a family that their three-year-old is either dead or disfigured because the village knew that there was an aggressive dog and did nothing about it. We've got to set some sort of threshold that where, once it reaches that point, we need to be able to do something about it. We've got to be able to protect life, whether it be dogs or humans. And I agree, I believe you, ma'am, you mentioned increased fines as far as the dog owners and holding dogs accountable, and I agree 100%. So, thank you for coming out, and like I said, I will make sure that you guys are aware when we actually discuss this.
Thank you. Can I say something? I meant to say something, but...
Yeah.
First, again, I want to thank everybody for coming. I know you guys applauded each other, but we applaud you for coming out. You know, we're committed to protecting the life, liberty, and property of everyone, and that includes your family, your pets, and, you know, you're part of making the community better by improving the relationships by being here. In the department, we've, just Friday, had Kane County Animal Control come out to the PD to do training, and it was for animal control, so that we can do a better job when we approach a residence, or we can do that. So it's not just because an officer gets bit or code enforcement, we don't want anyone to be injured or hurt. So, we realize we could do better, so we're going to try to do a better job in training. I appreciate everybody who says, you know, you had some great input, and we're going to follow up on that, and hopefully we can get together to provide more training, because I think it's simple, but something that needs to be done, where we remind each other, hey, these are some signs to look for, rattle a fence before you open the door. We're all human, so I appreciate you guys coming out.
I was going to add too, if you want to provide your, we have probably a blank sheet of paper, provide your email address to Armando, he can keep you up to date on the process of this specific item that comes before us. All right. Any other comments from the board on the issue? Stan?
I just wanted to say you guys have really warmed my heart tonight. It's always fun to see the expertise and the heartfelt community spirit that's in this town, and I'm, we're blessed, truly blessed to have that. I have a miniature dachshund who's about the size of a loaf of bread, but he thinks he's a rottweiler, and so I can relate to... You are well-informed, you were well-spoken. I think what we're seeing is that good communities and good governments start with a conversation and not with edicts and directives. So, thank you for being part of this. I'm sure we're going to wind up with something much better.
I had a couple of things that, or a couple of comments that I had in my head that I was going to share if we had this come up this evening, and some of them have been said. Mayor Matt Brawley had brought up that there is no proposal on the table, and I wanted to stress that to you. It was comments made by an individual on the board, and I watched the meeting, I didn't see any articles, so I don't know how something biased, I don't know, I certainly will go find that. But I watched the meeting, because we did not have a full board that evening, Mayor Matt and myself were not here. And again, I didn't see a whole lot of support behind the statement. So I just wanted to stress that there is not a proposal to do a one and done in this town. I want to make sure that you all realize that. The other thing I wanted to mention, Deputy Chief Sanders touched on it a little bit, we don't have animal control officers, we have police officers. The animal control officers are from the county, and if there's a loose dog, our officers are the ones that are trying to track them down, and they go in the police car, and then they get transported to whichever county they need to go to. So it's important to realize that not only does that pull our officers away from potentially something more serious, but they're police officers. That's not their main job, to go and chase down a loose dog. So perhaps that's something we can revisit with additional training and working with the two counties that fall within our jurisdiction. So, thank you. Those were the two things I wanted to stress this evening.
I guess I'll finish up here, and back to what Teresa said is, animal control cannot come on your property and get your dog. So, we're almost down to where it is the policeman. Animal control cannot go on private property. Now, the other thing, I've got a little dog, he's 11 weeks, you can see the scratches on my arm, you can see the bites all over right now, and he's not trained, but I'm trying to train him. I've worked with therapy dogs, little dachshunds that go into the hospitals, I've worked with them. I've adopted a pet. My Billy was a 16-year-old Karen Terrier. When he died, and he was a nipper, you couldn't tell when he was going to bite, all of a sudden he'd nip. And we knew he didn't like kids, so we kept kids away from him. And I guess that's what owners are supposed to do somewhat, but the dog was still a great dog, but he was a nipper. I guess what, and I'm going back with Teresa said, is, I'm not a person that's on the internet, so I don't go jump from items and things like that, but this was kind of a, and I'm quoting what some of these people said, a knee-jerk reaction, an overreaction to no second chance. To my opinion, and I ran that meeting that night, because Matt was gone, nobody said that, okay? And it got on social media and it just snowballed. All of a sudden, I've heard from many of you that say, this is a one-shot dog and he's gone. Well, I don't know where they got that. I know where the question came up from one of our trustees, but here, you better have four votes out of seven, or it ain't going anywhere. And to me, four votes isn't even close, I mean, probably got almost all votes for the... And when you say no second chance, to my knowledge, and I've been on the board 16 years, there's been two dogs we've put down. One we're trying to put down now, and one before. The one before was a pit bull, it attacked somebody, gave him like 20 stitches out of his yard. And a lot of this does amount to the circumstances. The second time, a lady was walking her dog down the street, and it was one of these little, little mutton head things that are so small, you can hardly, look like a dust mop. And of course, that's what my little guy is now, he's a little, he's going to be nine when he's, or nine pounds when he's biggest, he's only five now. But this dog, she was walking him down, and the same dog came out, grabbed the dog, shook him like a dust mop, and killed him right in front of her. That dog went down, okay? And we didn't have any, we really didn't have any kind of problem, we had a problem with the owner because they wanted to get rid of him to a neighbor and all, or, you know, cousin or whatever, and we said, no, that dog goes down, and we took him to court to make sure. This one, this time, the same reaction. He bit a couple kids, but they were neighbor kids, so think of your neighbors, and all of a sudden, that dog bit two of your neighbors in your yard. And yet they say, well, now you got to go to court. And they go, ah, these are my neighbors, you know, I... But meanwhile, the dog bit our ordinance man, not in the yard again, in somebody else's yard, jumped the fence, a four-foot fence, gave him the stitches, and the judge says, okay, now we got two. And we go, that's our policy, because it's set from the last one. It's the only dogs that we put down, and both things were vicious dogs, there was nothing to do with, can we save the dog and make rehab him, or anything like that, it just doesn't work that way. Other than that, I don't ever remember in 16 years saying, and our police go to a lot of the dog calls, and I, but I don't remember anybody saying, well, that dog bit one guy, get rid of it, because our police would say, no, it's, this was a different circumstances, or maybe it was a dog, a bad, I think we had one where the person gave it to his cousin or whatever, just to get rid of the dog, because we could see it coming for the second time. So we've never had a problem, I think social media kind of bounces around, and it got to the point that you think we're going to have a big discussion on it and decide if it's going to be one or not, and it's never going to be one that I can think of, because I don't think any of us have that bad a common sense, just for one, unless you kill somebody or something, but... The other thing is, we can't sue as a company, and I'll let our attorney speak on this, we can't sue for your neighbor jumping the, dog jumping the fence and biting your kids. The village can't sue that person, you can. Now, when those kids got bit, and then our ordinance guy got bit, we went to court, the kids didn't show up, the parents didn't show up, but our police officer did. Officer Gray showed up and told the judge, that dog bit kids, but they didn't show up, they're neighbors. And the judge said, that's all I want to know. He knew that the dog was out of the yard and bit the kids. He understands too, you're not going to go after your neighbor, because you got to live with them all the time. And maybe you would if you don't like your neighbor. But it's just a case where, this is what happened, and our officer was there, and then the second bite got him, and that's why we're going to put this dog down, because he's really not salvageable. I like the idea of the public relations, the resource, the neighborhood watch, maybe people can go talk to neighborhood watch people when their groups meet, I think that would be ideal for, Stan's got lists of the neighborhood watch, I think that would be great. A lot of these people just don't listen, but I think it would help, at least public relation-wise, that maybe, and it is a case-by-case basis that we look at each dog, we do not just pick one out and say, this is it. And I think Illinois statute has a lot to do with that. Somebody mentioned Illinois statute, it is by Illinois statute that we go by, and I think Illinois statute says, we can't go and make that person pay, and we can't go put that person in jail because their dog bit somebody. That's Illinois statute. We go as far as we can, and we try to protect everybody in Montgomery. So it's kind of a, I'm just sorry, it got so media-conscious that everybody thought we were going to put him down, one, just by a statement from one trustee who just voiced it that one night, and it just got out of hand, I think. But I, or at least four of us, are not for putting a dog down for one bite, so there's no discussion as far as I'm concerned, even bring it up. If you don't have the four, it's really tough to think you're going to change somebody's mind on a common sense thing. I guess that's it.
Any other comments from the board or staff on the issue? All right, so we will, if you set your email down, we will certainly notify you ahead of time. This is, I don't want to reiterate what everybody has said, but it's an important issue for us, you know. My family's a dog family, we have two dogs at this point, a little puppy with the razor-sharp teeth, and, but they're parts of our family, they're members of our family, as annoying as my dog is sometimes, he's a part of the family. So, we take this very seriously, and we'll, I would really like to work with all of you on a public relations, either a pamphlet or a flyer that we can send out to folks, to be responsible for your pet, and so to essentially protect everybody else. So, we will notify you. I appreciate everybody coming. You can stay for the entire meeting, but you certainly don't have to, and we won't be offended if you walk out. Yes, you can. Or we can bring it out in the hallway too, if that makes sense.
So there really wasn't a crowd to see the rest of the meeting.
Yeah. Nobody wants a sticker on for the tax levy. All right, I'll move on to the second item under public participation, we have Fire Chief Tom Myers, would like to address the board regarding the TIF rebate process. Thanks, chief.
Good evening, members of the village board and staff and the press. My name's Tom Myers, I'm the chief of the Montgomery and Countryside Fire Protection District. I can't believe it's been 18 months since we've been talking about the TIF rebate process, so I'm hoping that, and I'm going to keep it very short, I think everybody from the village board and staff has heard the fire district's concerns that continue to go on, and hopefully we can resolve this. I want to speak this evening, maybe go back in history a little bit, but I also want to talk about the facts, and I think the facts drive this particular case. We're down to a few decisions that the village board has to make, and hopefully I'll explain the fire district's position on that this evening. I do want to start off again by looking at the details of this process. If you look at your cover sheet from Jeff Soffel, there are some corrections from the meeting... there are some corrections from the meeting of May 22nd, 2017. The subject is levy year 2015 TIF rebate. And this one says 2016 TIF rebate. So I just wanna make sure that we're all talking about the same kind of terminology, the bullet points. The third bullet point doesn't talk anything about what the new agreement says with the 3%. So keep in mind that there's a new resolution out there that the Village Board passed, that the first bullet point is definitely correct. The second bullet point, any captured assessed taxable valuation, tax increment derived from new construction subsequent to January 13th of 2014 shall not be rebated. And that's true. That situation is United Sugars, and it's Nexo. So that is a true statement. Any captured assessed taxable valuation, tax increment derived from existing property improved subsequent to January 13th shall not be rebated. Now, that's not a correct statement, right? We know that, we take a look at what the improvement was, and we look at that and we say, "Did it affect the assessed value of the property?" And if it did, then that actual tax rebate is, the assessed value at that time is frozen and increased by 3%. So I just wanna make sure that what, and again, this is all interpretation, and this is, it seems like I'm going between staff and the fire district, trying to convince the Village Board to hold up to your promise. And what was that promise? Back in November 19th of 2013, the Village Board, under the direction of Mayor Brawley, Attorney Anderson, and Jeff Soffel, said very clearly that this TIF district was not interested in any of the background EAV as the buildings increase. And that's what my recollection was. I've given you transcriptions, written and a disc on that, that clearly states exactly what and how that was proposed to the Village Board. So with that, we've spent eighteen months talking about improvements to buildings. And this is really where the hang-up comes in to getting this TIF rebate process, process basically. So Mayor Brawley, it seems like, you know, you were very strong. You were very strong about, I should've turned my mic on a while ago.
It was, it was on for most of it.
Oh, okay.
It just shut off randomly.
You were very strong about that, and so was Jeff Soffel, and so was Steve Anderson, saying that the success of the TIF is not gonna be dependent on the background EAV. And because of our financial situation in 2008, basically, it was allow us to get that tax money from the existing buildings as it increases, give that back to us, and then anything new that comes in basically goes into the TIF. So with that, I wanna stick to the facts tonight. So I did a little research on Michaels. It seems like the first tax, the first TIF rebate was the 2014 assessed year, assessment year. And I know that the subject line items here on Jeff's, on Jeff's emails to the Village Board and trustees, go back and forth on the subject. Last month, it was levy year 2015 TIF number two rebate. This month, it's levy year 2016 TIF number two rebate. So the rebate back in 2014, 2014, would've been where Butterball was taken out of the TIF rebate. So we have to go back to that first year and correct the calculation for the fifth year because nobody talked about Butterball being actually removed from the TIF rebate. The second year rebate is actually what we're talking about. The 2015 assessment year. I like to use the terminology's assessment year. The 2014 assessment year was taxes that are paid in 2015. The 2015 assessment year are taxes payable in 2016. And the 2016 assessment year are taxes that are now being paid in 2017. So people are paying taxes this year for last year based on the assessed value of property. The assessed value of property is extremely important to the fire district. I just wanna talk about Michaels because the issue right now is whether or not Michaels comes out of the TIF rebate or it stays into the TIF rebate. So I did some research. Now, the research I did was from the Aurora Tax Assessor's Office, from the website, and from the Kane County Tax Assessor's Office. And some building permit history here from the Village of Montgomery. There's two parcels, if you follow that handout, with Michaels. There's a front parcel and a rear parcel. The sales and tax bill history on that property is all substantiated in the second page of that document, where on December 10th, 2013, it was sold to a company called New Midwest Rentals. It was sold on a warranty deed, reported and sold on December 10th of 2013, reported in the first quarter on January 21st of 2014. So it was reassessed at the end of the 2014 year going into the 2015 tax year. Okay? So the 2014 assessed value payable in 2015 was based on the sale property of the building. On March 18th of 2015, it was sold to Michaels Corporation in March of 2015. Reassessed at the end of 2015 because the assessor looks at the end of the year and says, "What projects or what developments have happened, or what improvements have happened on that particular site that would increase the sales, or would increase the assessed value of property?" So the 2015 assessed value property payable in 2016 was based on the sale price of the building for $2 million. So currently, the building has been sold twice. There's two parcels on the building. And a building permit was issued in the spring and summer of 2015. A temporary occupancy permit was issued in November 2015. And as of May of 2017, there has been no final occupancy issued for Michaels Corporation. Now, the fire district gets its money through assessed value property. And when we have new construction outside of the TIF, we had a large industrial addition on a building on Ockit Road that still, up until about six or eight months ago, had a outstanding building permit where it didn't get finalized and sent over to the Tax Assessor's Office. So I talked to the assessor's office about that. We've worked on getting that building because the importance is, is getting that final occupancy permit or that final building permit signed off. The reason for that is, what they tell me, is that so many people start projects, get building permits within the villages, and then they start the project and they never complete it. So the resources out there for the Aurora Tax Assessor's Office to properly assess the improvement of the building is based on the information they get from the Building Department. And they want that final occupancy permit. Our tax bill history, in 2014 tax bill, Michaels, the front building, paid $29,267. The 2015 tax bill went to $42,000. So Trustee Bond, when we talk about how much money we're talking about here, and when we, when we talk about, does Michaels stay in the TIF or out of the TIF? Well, if you take the difference of the 2014 and 2015 tax bill, that's what we're talking about. We're talking roughly $12,000 in that particular. That's called background EAV. And that would be either rebated or moved into the TIF. In the 2016 tax bill, their tax bill went up to $61,287. So again, we're only looking at the 2015 tax assessed year right now because the 2016 assessed year is, the taxes are being paid in 2017. So we won't know what that true amount is until the end of 2017. The back parcel is the parking lot. And that's the one everybody talks about. Well, they put a million dollars' worth of stone in there, and it's worth a lot of money, and the taxes went up, and things like that. Well, in 2014, the tax bill was $329. 2015, it was $330. And 2016, it went down to $323. So the tax bill certainly doesn't reflect the gravel that was put into that back parcel. Now, staff has told me, "Well, you know, the tax assessor made a mistake and put the improvements on the building portion of the, of the building." Well, that, that's not true. They know, they're very familiar with Michaels from me calling them. We've researched it, we've laid it out. And basically, the increases for 2014 to 2015, 2015 to 2016 have been based on the fact that they sold the building, not the fact of any improvements because they haven't received the final occupancy.
Hey, Chief. So we're at eleven minutes.
Why has this taken eighteen months, Mayor, to make these decisions and come up with a conclusion?
Sir, you had five minutes. And I'm going to hold you to two more minutes because I let you go forty-five minutes the last time. You can very bluntly say that you disagree with the approach. And we've talked, a lot of us, and we can get into numbers, actually, at the board level. I would really like to get into the policy of this. And if, so if you do have an objection to this, we have fourteen days before we need to enact this. And so if you have an objection to this, put that in writing so that we don't take another forty-five minutes at the meeting. It's very, hold on a second. It's very important to us. I'm not trying to cut you off. But I'm also trying to get to the actual item on the agenda where we do discuss this. And we can talk about the rebate, the actual resolution that we approved on May 22nd. And forgive me, I do not recall asking you specifically. Does the fire district agree with the approach in that resolution?
No, it doesn't. It says that the staff will make a recommendation to the Village Board. And if the fire district disagrees with that, they'll come and speak before the board.
Yes. Well, in this odd year, because we're so late. But generally speaking, you would come to the JRB, voice your concerns. And you can certainly come to any Village Board meeting and speak. I'm not trying to take that away. But so you disagree with what part of that? So you don't agree with the TIF ordinance that we worked on with you?
I agree with the ordinance. But then again, our discussions, as we've talked many, many times, what is an improvement, right? Is an improvement paying your front door? No, it's not. That doesn't affect your taxes.
Nope.
I feel that through my research from the Aurora Tax Assessor's Office, who writes the tax bill, or recommends to the Kane County Tax Assessor what the tax bill should say, and he tells me that it's based on the sale of the property, that means to me, the fire district's position is that this TIF rebate, it should stay in the TIF rebate. It should not go into the TIF fund. Michaels should stay. And we talked about this at the last meeting, that we thought it might've been rebated a year earlier. My research now shows that within two years, it shouldn't be taken out of the TIF rebate and put into the TIF fund. So we strongly object to that.
So the Michaels rebate?
We want Michaels to stay in the TIF rebate process. And we want Butterball to be resolved from the first TIF rebate process because that wasn't calculated properly. And we just want this issue resolved.
So you object to Michaels and you object to?
Butterball was taken out without being properly refunded in the first rebate year.
Yes. And we'll look at that one. Actually, that should be in here, I believe, right? We see Michaels and we see Michaels. So Butterball is referenced in the?
It's in Justin's Excel spreadsheet.
Well, yeah, I know. But it's not in the memo. So we'll talk about that. I just need to get your concerns on record, and we can talk about that. But to rehash issues from eighteen months ago that we have all talked about multiple, 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 multiple times?
Absolutely.
Is frustrating.
Right.
Because we've worked, hold on a second, sir. We've worked very hard to address your concerns. Not, no single person in this room personally benefits from these conversations or deteriorating our relationship with the fire district, right? I in no way want to do that. I wanna come up with the resolution that you guys agreed with, that you guys approve of, and then we wanna implement that policy. That's my goal. So when this comes up later on the agenda, your concern has been heard. If there are members of the board that are unsure about these numbers with Butterball and Michaels, we can and will ask staff for additional information before we approve the rebate. So if the issue comes up later on in the meeting and there's an opportunity for you to speak, I will invite you to the podium at that time.
Okay.
Thank you.
I appreciate the board's time and consideration. I want everybody to work with facts. We can, we can talk about numbers and put them in whatever stalls we want. But at the end of the day, the facts are the facts. And this is why their taxes went up. It wasn't because of the improvements. So...
Thank you, sir. All right. That'll move on to the consent agenda. I'll read the items and entertain a motion for approval. All right. The minutes of the Village Board meeting of June 12th. Accounts receivable report from May of 2017. Accounts payable through June of, June 22nd. And ordinance 1773 adopting the 2017 prevailing wage rate. This is a waiver of first passage on the second.
Motion approved. Consent?
Second.
Call the roll.
Trustee Marasek?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Hines?
I'm trustee Youngerman.
Jay.
I carry six zero. Thank you. This came up a lot quicker than I thought. Item for separate action. Item A is the levy year 2016 TIF number two rebate approval. And at this time, I would turn it over to staff because I know there's several things that we should be addressing. Go ahead.
Thank you, President Brawley. First of all, I do have to apologize. It actually should say levy year 2015. And that is, I take responsibility for that.
And that's on the subject of the cover page in the memo?
It is levy year 15 received in calendar year 2016 for fiscal year 2017.
Yeah. So you're losing us there. All right.
The board had requested the timing of when permits were provided to the assessor. As such, the page, the next page is, has been provided by the Community Development Department. There were three separate permits issued to Michaels Corporation. The first, June 23rd, it was, they are compiled and they are sent to the assessor the following month. So the second permit, the one in question, the $1.17 million, it was issued on July 2nd, and it was sent to the assessor on 8/5. And then last, there was a permit issued on October 26th, and that was sent to the assessor on November 2nd of 2015. As such, staff believes that the assessor did have the information with the 2015 levy year, and that staff has calculated the rebate based upon taking Michaels out of the TIF, except for the background. If I can talk about the background for a couple minutes. So in the report, it shows the village received $188,000 in tax increment during fiscal year 17. So the total taxes received was $188,000. From that, if we look at the taxes received just on Butterball and Michaels, that's $45,400. And then if we look at the frozen background plus 3%, that amount is $6,000.
So it's, I don't mean to cut you off, but the, it's 3% of what? The $45,000?
So, no. On Butterball, that was recalculated. That is not, those numbers are not included here.
Okay.
We'll move over to the board to just look at this year. The recalculation that was done, previously, the TIF kept $14,800. And upon recalculation, an additional $5,000 will be provided to the taxing districts. And so the net that the TIF would keep for last year was $9,800. For this year, the amount subject to rebate based upon staff's recommendations is $148,800. That is, to the taxing districts, get $148,800. And the TIF would keep $39,400. Back to the background, the number for Butterball last year was roughly $4,900. We add 3% to that. It's roughly $5,100. And then we take the background tax increment from this year And then we take the background tax increment from this year on Michaels, which is 900. So that is the total background of 6,000 that is shown here.
Is that the third sheet in the memo that covers that? Because I'm having a hard time following the math here.
Yeah, there's a lot of the numbers you said are not in front of us.
The third sheet just shows Michaels.
Okay. So, and maybe we should talk about this at, at the next meeting, a little bit more in detail on both of these, and I know that we're going backwards to address that, like to see that spelled out in a way that's easy to read at a board meeting, and then, but I did want to highlight one, two things, that I know I spoke with Jeff about before, and he's not here this evening. When we issued the building permits and the grading permits for Michaels, those were assigned by us to a certain pin. That pin is the pin that, that the building resides on, and we do that on purpose.
That's correct, and the, the statement about that the tax assessor made a mistake, I don't believe that that is correct. Well, the tax assessor has told us is that when there's multiple parcels or multiple pins for one particular user, you could have two or three, depending on the user, they assign generally to the address or the parcel that has the address. So in the case of Michaels, that's the front parcel where the building has been renovated, and that's the assignment for all of the dollars values that go into the different permits. And as indicated on this one sheet, there was a permit issued in, in June of 15. In July of 15, the village sent that permit with the valuation to the assessor's office. That was 100,000. In July of 15, there was a permit issued for 1.1700, so 1 point, almost 1.2 million dollars in improvements, that was given to the assessor's office in August of that same year.
And that was for grading?
And that included the work that was part of the grading, that was on the back parcel, but the assignment by pin is to the front parcel because of the address, that's what we've been told. Later that same year, there was another permit for 23,000 in October of 15, and in, within a week, that was sent to the assessor's office prior to the levy in December. So they're well aware of the valuation that's in the property with the permits that have been issued.
And I, I remember specifically talking about looking at the use, regardless of where parcel lines may lie, right? Use of the property. However the stuff gets assigned is more or less irrelevant to what specific parcel. So yes, comparing the tax dollars for the back parcel, 300, and it never went up or down over three years generally. So that makes sense there. I didn't mean to cut you off. Do you have anything else on that?
I can answer any questions the board may have.
All right, any questions of the board? I think it would be good for us to talk about this at our next meeting, where we can see kind of the, just see some of this in, in a report. That's my opinion.
Could I, either now or at the next meeting, there was a reference made to the 12,000 difference. Could you confirm that, and does that apply to all of the TIF recipients or to a specific one?
The, it's actually 11,534.80, so roughly 12,000. That is the amount to all of the taxing districts. And so what staff is recommending as background is 920.58, and this is on the third sheet, levy year 2015. The difference that we're talking about is 10,614.22.
So for the fire department itself, do you have a number in mind that is in play for them?
The county will determine that number every year.
Okay.
I can, based upon last year, that number was roughly 7.5%, but I cannot tell you with 100% certainty what that would be this year.
But the, the 11, let's say 12,000, is for all of the testing, taxing districts that are impacted by the TIF?
Correct.
By their proportional share?
Correct.
So if I might, you're talking about 7.5% of that, give or take how the county assigns it, of the 12,000?
So less than?
To the fire district. Pardon?
Less than 1,000 probably is safe to say.
For just the fire district, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? Does anybody have any specific questions for the fire chief?
No, but I would like to see, like you mentioned, there was a lot of numbers, Justin, that you were throwing out there. I couldn't write fast enough, and they don't marry up to anything here. And, and, you know, the document the fire chief provided, thank you, by the way, the, the numbers on those tax bills actually match right to your numbers, which lends some credence that everything is on the up and up. But some kind of a detailed breakdown would be better for us to see, you know, this is this tax year, this is this one, how much are we going back and reb, I would like to know how much, because of the recalculation, how much are we going back and doing, and are we paying them interest? Because I feel like we should be paying them a portion of interest that they've lost. And I know interest is a small amount, but what's right is right. We should have given them that money then, they didn't have it to use for whatever purposes. I think we owe it to them to make it right for that. But I'd like to see that number as a separate number, so we can calculate interest on it if so be, the board decides to do that. And then to know what the rebate is this year, instead of lumping them together, because I just think it's getting a little muddy here, we're making stew.
I agree with Trustee Marisak. My other comment is, Michaels is still on a temp CO?
I can explain that. The reason it's on a temp CO is because they have not completed all of the improvements to that rear storage yard that they indicated that they would do. To get it on a final CO, I think we should contact Michaels in particular and decide whether or not they want to, it amounts to lighting, what I've been told, that they were intending on putting in the rear, that gravel parking area or storage area. Lighting was proposed by them to put into that storage area, that has not been completed, so that's why there has not been a final CO. Because not all of the improvements that are shown on their approved building plans have been constructed.
You would think that it would be easier to install lighting prior to the completion of the parking lot.
I can't explain why they haven't put the lighting in. It's a security measure for them, obviously. So we will contact Michaels and see if they intend to put that improvement in. It's not unusual to have a CO quite a long time after a final CO. Obviously, they have a temp CO, a final CO a number of months after it's been issued, the permit's been issued.
And Justin, will you also include the numbers for Butterball?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
And just the, the years, 214, 5, 15, and then the amounts, and you were throwing Butterball at us, and we had no figures at all on paper, so I was looking for the third sheet, but you kept saying three sheets, I kept saying, "There," but I see what you mean by three sheets now, so go ahead.
Generally, we take the last sheet of all of your memos before the board packet goes out.
Yeah, that was it.
I think the important thing from our perspective is, is that, from community development's perspective, is that the, obviously, the assessed value has dramatically increased for the Michaels property, even though the final CO hasn't been issued.
So we'll discuss this at the July 10th or the July 24th village board meeting. July 10th, I will be on family vacation. I normally don't say that publicly, but since I will be absent, you guys are free to talk about it without me, or wait until the 24th. Item B, we have ordinance 1774, supplemental ordinance, providing for the issuance of general obligation alternate bonds, series 2017, waiver of first and passage on the second.
Thank you, President Rowley. As previously discussed, the village sold the series 2017 alternate bonds this morning. Anthony Micali, Micali from Spear is here to give a brief summary of the results, and either of us can answer questions, should the board have any. In addition, at your seat tonight, I have provided two documents. The one with a staple is the results of the sale and the ordinance 1774. Once the sale takes place, there are a bunch of blanks that get filled in, so this is the final document that is being approved by the board. We gave you the document with all the blanks in the packet, but wanted to provide this to you completed. So with that, I will turn it over to Anthony for a brief summary.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Anthony Micali, Spear Financial. We work as municipal advisor to the village. As Justin had mentioned, we had a competitive public auction today for the village's general obligation alternate bond, series 2017. We received three bids, with the winning bid coming from Northland Securities out of Minneapolis, Minnesota. The bonds were issued for water projects, as you know, for the total project amount of 3.4 million. The winning, not to jump, but the winning bid, the winning rate came in at a 3.2049% with the second place bidder just behind them at a 3.2128%. We resized the issue to provide for the 3.4 million and level the debt service. The result is a final par amount of 3.37 million and a final true interest cost to the village of 3.1894%. So just to kind of remark about that, this is a 20-year issuance at under 3.2%, which is historically a very good rate. When we began this process, we were looking at approximately 3.6%. So seeing it come that far under our initial estimates is very good, and I believe is around a 200,000 swing or betterment for the village. We use an open auction process, so we actually saw 10 bids received from these three bidders, with the winning bidder, Northland, bidding seven times to continue to improve their bid and overtake Robert W. Baird &amp; Company. I'll mention that, you know, as, as part of this process, we go to the rating agencies, in this case, Standard &amp; Poor's, and the village's double A rating was affirmed with a stable outlook. Standard &amp; Poor's looks at the local economy as well as your finances, and, you know, remarked on the, the strong management, the strong budgetary practices, the strong liquidity, those are the things that, that drove the result today, and it's a testament to you all and your staff. I'll, if anybody has any questions, happy to answer.
I do have questions, and thank you, by the way, for that. The, I guess, how much does it cost us to, what's the cost to us to issue the bonds? Because I know that that's part of the, and maybe explain just the revised versus the true interest rate, just for?
Absolutely. So to address the cost, there's, there's two aspects to that. There's a, what's called a fixed cost, or part of your cost of issuance, which would be bond counsel, Spear Financial's fee, rating agency fee, and then some other miscellaneous costs, trustee, and things like that. For this issue, that was just over 40,000.
Okay.
There's also a cost to the underwriter, and that's part of the bid. So that's not something we know ahead of time, nor can we, nor can we dictate what that is. They offer to buy the bonds at certain interest rates and at a certain price, with their fee basically baked into that price. And we accept the lowest cost of those two metrics on the, on the day of sale.
Okay.
To your question on the, the revised versus the original, whenever we do a competitive public sale, we have to estimate where we think rates are going to be, and every bond sale is sold either, you know, at a, at a premium or a discount, where the underwriter sells the bonds for actually more than your offering, which is what's happening here. They're, they're paying you, you're issuing 3.37 million, they're going to pay you 3.44 million, which is premium bonds. We don't know what that's going to be ahead of time. So what we do is we come up with an estimate, we put that out for bid, and when that comes back, we revise the final amount to meet your, your goals. In this case, the goal was project deposit for the waterworks projects of 3.4 million, and then a level overall debt service structure. That's what accounts for the change in par and the change in true interest cost from the original to the, to the revised.
Okay. That makes sense. All right. Thank you. Any questions?
Yes.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, so this is, again, this is item B, ordinance 1774. This is a waiver of first and passage on the second. Is there a motion for approval?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Hines?
Yay.
And Trustee Youngerman?
Yay.
I carry 6-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, sir. One thing that I don't think we highlight enough about this project, other than the very specific water main replacement portion, is the goal to remove all or as many of the lead service lines that we know of in the village. It's been very important to the public ever since the Flint, Michigan incident to, to protect residents from, essentially, from their own water service line. So we're doing everything we can to get those out of our system. All right, moving on, item C, we have recommendation to waive the competitive bid and award of contract for street striping to perform traffic control, wait, street striping to Perform Traffic Control Systems Limited of Elk Grove Village in the amount not to exceed 24,000.
Thank you, Mr. President. Historically, the village has performed street striping in critical areas throughout the road network annually, while other areas have been rotated on an every other year or every third year basis. Perform Traffic Control Systems of Elk Grove Village has done our streets sweet, sorry, street striping for many years. Their staff is very familiar with our roadways, they're professional, and most notably, they work with the most utmost attention to traffic safety while they're working in the roadway and redirecting traffic throughout their work. We've typically operated just below the board approval threshold, given our kind of structure, but this year, I'm looking to expand just a little bit to cover a bit more territory. Therefore, I'm requesting that we waive competitive bid and continue to work with Perform, who we know well, but with a little more flexibility up to the 24,000 threshold. So I'm, I'm asking for your waiver of competitive bid and approval to award them up to 24,000. If there's any questions, I'm happy to entertain those now.
Thank you. Any questions?
This is approximately 4,000 over the threshold.
Yeah, and, correct, and actually, I hope to work at about 22,000, but I built in just a little bit of flexibility, because it's hard to stop striping a road at a given point. It's generally best if you go to the limits or to an intersection or something.
Yeah, we have a crosswalk.
So 2,000 to 4,000 over, to answer your question.
All right. If there are no other comments or motion?
So moved.
Second. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Hines?
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yay.
And Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
I carry 6-0, thank you. Item D, intergovernmental agreement with the Montgomery Countryside Fire Protection District for the transfer of property at 331 Clay Street.
Thank you again, Mr. President. The facility at 331 Clay Street has kind of a peppered history. The site was once home to the village's deep well number two, which has since been abandoned properly. It was also the home to the It was also the home to the village's first water tower. Additionally, I'm told it served as the first fire station for Montgomery, or served previously as a fire station for Montgomery Countryside Fire Protection District before they relocated across the street. Furthermore, the site was home to ESDA, you may recall, a local emergency services group. Most recently, the facility has been controlled by Public Works, acting as a supplemental storage space for equipment and supplies. We have previously considered demolition of the property and discussed that with the village board, until we learned that Montgomery Countryside may be interested again in ownership of the property. Before you deny it, there is a IGA drafted by the village's attorney transferring ownership of the property. This has been reviewed and approved by the Fire District Board and their attorney as well. I'm recommending the approval of the IGA to transfer the property to Montgomery Countryside Fire Protection District. I understand they will also use it as storage, potentially training, and perhaps even at some point try to create a CERT team, similar to the ESDA, but a, a community emergency response team. So that's just one of their thoughts. I don't know how far off into the future that may be, but I'm happy to answer any other questions you may have at this time.
Any questions?
No.
I, I'm sorry, just in a row, I did have one. I was told that the district's attorney still had some questions, but is that true, chief? I'm not sure that I have the most up-to-date information.
That was the last we heard also. We didn't hear that they had actually accepted the agreement.
Our board accepted the agreement and signed it, but I know that our attorney was looking at the closing papers, like the detax plan and things like that, like detax comes later.
Yes, once the agreement's approved and signed by both parties, then we can prepare that.
The agreement before you is done, signed by our board.
Okay, very good. I just wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page. Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Trustee Marisack?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz?
Aye.
Trustee Youngerman?
Aye.
May I carry, carry six zero? All right, moving on, item E, we have Resolution 2017 dash 004, approving the release of a deed restriction for 1460 Southeast River Road. This is the Fox Valley Park District. With that, I will turn it over to, who would like to talk? Rich?
Again, this is an item, this is the old police station property, and there was a deed restriction in place. It's staff's recommendation that that deed restriction be removed so that it can be transferred at this time.
Any questions for staff?
I'm glad Jeff stayed awake all this time, other than that.
Thanks for coming, Jeff.
He's got two items.
That's true. All right, hearing now?
Motion?
Yeah, go ahead.
Motion to approve Resolution 2017 dash 004.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Marisack?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz?
Aye.
And Trustee Youngerman?
Aye.
May I carry six zero? You know, I can't stress enough, and just to state this publicly, how enjoyable it has been, seriously, working with the Fox Valley Park District over the last several years. Please convey that to your newly-elected board and the executive director as well. It's just been, honestly, a great relationship that I look forward to working with you guys in the future. And I should have said that before we, you know, approved your other item or discussed it, but at any rate, I just wanted to state that to you guys. All right, moving on to items for discussion, we have item A is the Montgomery Development Fund Program. Director Young.
Thank you, President Brawley. This is the program that we've been talking about for quite a while, and this is the draft of this new program that we want to take the funds that had previously been part of the revolving loan fund that has been in place with the village for a number of years, and create this new fund based on the fact that the state has released these funds that initially started the revolving loan fund from several decades ago. Release those funds without restrictions to the village to use in whatever fashion they feel it's necessary. So with that in mind, we, we took a look at a two-part program, and that's what's in your draft, identified as the development fund, and looked at a two-part program, taking the funds that are available, and about one-third of those funds, looking at doing a forgivable loan or grant program for retail and commercial businesses located on specifically identified corridors. And what we had in mind was Douglas Road, Montgomery Road, River Street, right here in the downtown, and possibly some other corridors, to look at private investment opportunities with a loan that would be a minimum of $2,500 and a maximum of $10,000. Looked at this as a three-year situation or a three-year loan. If a business did not go forward with operations within that three-year timeframe, then there could be a prorated repayment of the funds to the village. We would look at this in terms of trying to do some, essentially aesthetic cleanup of properties, which could include painting, exterior cleaning, windows, tuck, tuck pointing, awnings and canopy repairs and things of that nature, landscaping and signage. So this is a program that would take, again, up to one-third of the funds that we would have in the, in the overall, the overall fund to go forward and look at some small business loans. The second portion would be two-thirds of the funds available, would continue on a similar program to the revolving loan fund program that we currently have in place, and look at projects in the commercial, industrial, manufacturing, and distribution areas of the village. The minimum loan amount would be $10,000. We did not set a maximum intentionally because we wanted to look at being creative on, on different businesses that we could help, but there is a limit to those funds, obviously. Currently, there are two loans out on the revolving loan fund that's still, is that correct, two, or is it one? Okay, sorry. One, one loan that is out with Butterball, which we anticipate will be completely repaid still this year. So we're talking about an overall fund of about $1.6 million. So two-thirds of that could go into a similar program that we already have as part of the revolving loan fund, as a low-interest-rate loan to businesses that would like to do some expansion or remodeling projects with the same kind of conditions on security and repayment within a five-year period if there were businesses that did not continue to go forward with operations in the village. So this could be for the acquisition of property, buildings, fixtures within a building, site preparation, demolition, clearing, heavy machinery, just a number of different things, working capital. We've listed at the bottom of page three some businesses which we feel would not be appropriate for expansion with the use of this loan program, and we would have a, a new loan committee. The, we'll come back at a later date and ask that a new loan committee be formed for this, what we're calling the Montgomery Development Fund, to review and make recommendations on a loan application to the village board, and the village board would have final say on any loans that would be granted. So this is the draft of what we believe would be a, a good program to bring forward for community and economic development, and just want your input at this point in time.
Rich, I have a couple of questions for you. Under both sections, whether it's a grant or a loan, there's a reference to the continued operation of that specific business. But basically, we're only saying that it has to be for the term of the loan or one, or this minimum timeframe or the term of the loan. Why wouldn't we want them to operate in the village a little bit longer beyond, beyond that timeframe?
We could definitely, we could definitely add that as a condition. We just wanted to make sure that the loan amount, obviously, was used or came back to the village in the, in the case of the larger loan amount. We could definitely look at increased timeframe of operation and then some type of a repayment of a portion of it after the loan had been completed.
When I was thinking about that, those, the same item and under the two different areas, I, I could see where it might give a business the opportunity to sort of spruce things up and then perhaps sell, and then they wouldn't be operating after that timeframe. So I don't, I don't know, I was just thinking, it, it might be better for us to say, well, we'd like you to stick around a little longer after you do this, but then we probably wouldn't have any recourse.
Well, it depends on how we craft it, and if it's legal to ask for a repayment after the loan has been satisfied. I, I'd have to look into that and get some village attorney input on that.
For the loan portion, as so long as they paid it back, I think they've lived up to their, but they were, the forgivable grant or the forgivable loan that they're, over time, they wouldn't have to pay back, I get your point on that.
Mm-hmm. Okay, a couple more. On the, the low-interest loan section, you have a minimum loan amount proposed of $10,000. Why wouldn't somebody, let's say somebody wants the loan of $10,000, why wouldn't they just go for a grant? I mean, shouldn't, shouldn't it be a little bit higher than our top grant amount?
It could be $10,001, I guess. We were just trying to set a demarcation between the two programs, so we could look at that, increasing that amount. Didn't want to have a gap, so to speak.
Right, right, but I'm just thinking, if it's the, the top amount, let's say for a grant, then they would say, well, I'll just go for the grant and not have to worry about paying this back.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Couple more. On page four, near the bottom, it's the second point from the bottom. Finance Director will be responsible for reporting the status of all loans. Okay, continue on. The village may enter into an agreement with a third party for loan servicing. Would we then be building any fees into the loan amount for the business that took out the loan? So basically passing on any fees to them.
That would be the intent, yes.
Right. Then we probably have, need to have that.
Further, yes, but that is the intent.
Okay. And then at the top of the page, the very first bullet point, there's a reference to the business must be located in the corporate limits of the village of Montgomery, or which are determined to be principally, which are determined to principally benefit the village of Montgomery.
Right.
So what would be an example of that? What would be looking at? Well, that's what I was thinking, was caterpillar, but, you know.
Well, for instance, BBF would be an example of that, because technically, BBF is not within the village.
They're outside there.
But it obviously has a influence in the village, so to speak, so that's the type of situation we're thinking of.
Even like the Mike's Autobody over there that's now vacant. Definitely, it's just outside of the village, but you'd be hard-pressed to find anybody.
I didn't hear what you said.
Right behind, like Taco Madre over there, there's an Autobody shop.
Jake's.
Jake's Autobody.
All right, yeah.
That, you know, you'd be hard-pressed to find somebody that doesn't realize that that's not in town, so.
Is that the half fat?
Yes. They cut my car in half.
That's the idea, and again, it's, you know, we'd have to go through a loan committee and then obviously come to the village board. So if the village board didn't agree that Jake's Autobody had a big influence on, in the village, then, you know, that would be up to you to, to look, have them look elsewhere for assistance.
Okay. Those were my questions slash comments for you.
I have one question regarding the formation of the committee. Any thoughts as to numbers of people on the committee, or?
We were thinking three to five, potentially. Nothing too large, but some, something, you know, functioning like the Plan Commission does for the board or the ZBA, making a recommendation. People that are in business, obviously people that are in banking or finance would have a good sense of whether it was a good loan to recommend to the board.
Okay. And enough people that if someone's not around?
Right.
I had some thoughts about possibly adding some other non, or ineligible businesses.
Yes, and you shared those with me on Friday, and they just were not incorporated into the packet because
They'll come back again.
They came back, or came to us after the packet was put together, so that will, that will come back in the next draft.
Thank you. This is very well thought through, by the way. I'm excited to see it. I think it'll help us.
Glad to see the program continue forward without the state involvement.
Yeah, definitely. And, and Justin, do you have an update on the Butterball loan repayment?
The, are you talking about the actual repayment of the remaining balance?
Yes.
I do not have an update on that at this time.
Okay. Because they're closing operations in the next couple of weeks out there?
Yes.
I think it's July 18th, if I'm not mistaken, and so we'll be talking to them.
Okay.
We have been in contact with them, but I don't know that that particular date has been discussed.
Okay.
I thought in our notes it was stated they would have the repayment by July 15th. Is that a change?
Do you remember the date that they said? Was it the 18th or 15th? Do you happen to remember?
Well, the majority of the staff will be on by the end of July, but I don't know the top personnel will be in the launch, so I guess I believe that if they should repay the loan prior to
So before they cease operations. And I, I expressed as much to the attorney that called me to notify us of the closing, that they repay that before they close, so that's certainly a priority for us to get our loan repayment.
I believe that they, they'll cease operations on the production of the, the production lines in the middle of July. Is that correct? Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. And we will certainly see this at a future meeting. All right, item B, for discussion, we have the Fox Valley Park District liquor license request. I was going to turn it over to Armando, but he's not really here, so Director Young, or? Usually liquor license stuff goes.
Yeah, the chief.
Yeah, I apologize, I was not briefed on that.
Okay.
So I don't have an answer.
That's right. Is there anybody here from the Fox Valley Park?
Yes, there is. Jeff, help us out, man.
Go ahead, Jeff. Jeff, could you brief us?
I can, we're brief. Jeff Palmquist, Fox Valley Park District Senior Director of Planning, Research and Grants. The Fox Valley Park District has had discussions with staff regarding accommodations for alcohol at the Stewart Sports Complex, so I want to just stress that it's out at, out at Stewart, and the request is for 2018 and forward to be able to provide alcohol via, kind of a beverage cart. If you're a golfer, you know what, what I'm talking about. Have up to two mobile carts that would operate out of the existing newer concession restrooms on the south side, and that would be kind of the stocking location, and then they would traverse out. The intention would be to have these primarily for the larger tournament events, as well as the weekday adult leagues. Quite honestly, one of the reasons for the request is to stay competitive with the other, other larger complexes in the area, as well as the adult leagues. We're losing business to us. We go Yorkville, Turner's, other locations without that provision. I can get into quite a bit of detail. I believe it's been presented to staff, and I hope there's, there's evidence of thoroughness and detail in the restriction. I think in even some areas, it's more restrictive even than, than the village has, so, again, the intention is to be controlled, stay competitive, continue to grow our tournaments and our adult leagues.
But this isn't something where we're talking about a special event, like the Zombie Run or something like that?
No.
This is Wednesday night soccer league, beer cart drives past.
Right, that's, to accommodate. Right, that's to accommodate that activity, exactly.
Okay. As well as the zombie events, and everything would be covered under this.
That I, that might be a separate circumstance with something like that. I think that's a detail, and that's a good question. I'm glad you asked that one.
What was the question? I apologize.
That this is not for special events like the Zombie Run or something. This is on Wednesday night, Bob Soccer League is playing, beer cart drives past, and it would incorporate the Zombie Runs, and Jeff said that he wasn't quite sure if that would be handled separately. But I'm thinking, once we issue the liquor license...
Well, it depends what it's for. And I think it, I was just talking with our attorney, would, we would be creating a new type of liquor license for this? We currently don't have a Class P. Well, yeah, there currently doesn't exist, right?
It doesn't exist. The potential might exist, depending on what they wanted, that they could fit within one of the current classifications, but there's also the potential of creating a whole new class license, which would really be unique and granted only to the park district.
In which case we should...
Contain the restrictions that you want or you felt appropriate.
We can call it the JP liquor license. Does that work?
I think in our draft notes, we call it P.
And I should clarify, too. It also is to streamline our process so that you're not faced with a dozen special event permits that just come and bombard you, and we're not. Yeah, doing that same application process, so we can come up with a logical mechanism that provides the right control, but also has that amenity and that feature out at Stewart in a, like I said, in a controlled fashion.
And you guys have been responsible with, you know, with handling a liquor license and self-policing the issue on your property before, and I don't have any concerns with that. The one question that I did have, and I didn't see the, I wasn't briefed on this at the staff level, the, this would be for adult sporting events or both?
No, that would be during, during large tournaments out there on the weekends, so there, yes, there would be youth games on premise as well. The complex is so big that there are, you know, there might be the house league on the south end and adult softball on the north end on a Saturday.
Yeah, okay.
But obviously, we're selling to the adults.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay.
I have a minor question, perhaps. This references the Fox Valley Park District Stewart Sports Complex. Is there any desire or intention to expand it to include Jericho Lake?
Not at this time.
Is that a separate parcel or...
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Put a canoe and some guys with a case of beer and it'd work all fine.
Well, it might be worth the golf cart ride over there, yeah.
All right. So this is only for discussion. If there are any objections from the board, we'd like to note those at this time or at some point. We do have to create potentially a new class of liquor license at a future meeting. But if you need more information from Jeff, now would be a good time to request that. Otherwise, we will add this on a future agenda for discussion of the type, creating that class, and then issuing the liquor license for next year.
Very much.
Thank you, sir. Thanks, Jeff.
I only, man, I do want to say to the Bob Vaughn worked real well with this, too, and that was when Jeff was a kid, so it's fine. And he worked good then, too.
That's awesome. All right, so item C this evening, we have a petition to disconnect property on Jericho Road. And I'll turn that over to Engineer Waller for a summary.
So this relates to the Aurora University project. As the project was moving forward and the plat was being filed, we recognized that there were some inconsistencies with the right-of-way along Jericho Road. There was property that was, the right-of-way was in, was owned by the City of Aurora but was in Montgomery, and there was some other inconsistencies. So what we're proposing is what I would call more of a housekeeping chore, but we're basically going to revert back to the boundary agreement as the guide, even though that's been expired, but use that as the guide for determining where right-of-way would be. And that's what we followed, since that seemed to be the most logic, logical, and that's how the right-of-way should have been defined. When it came in, it came in in kind of fits and starts. So now we're gonna go back, clean up that corridor, that short corridor, to make it align with the, with the previous, with the boundary agreement that we're using in principle right now. And there would then be an intergovernmental agreement with Aurora University, City of Aurora, and Village Montgomery to determine the access for the complex and also to address any maintenance issues for the roadway across that area, since it's kind of a joint roadway, if you will. So this is, there's a 30-day waiting period after it's filed. We just wanted to make you aware of it, and we can get any more specific information you may want on this, but again, we feel like it's just really cleaning up something that probably should have been done a little bit differently a long time ago, so.
I have a question, if I may, and don't talk to me in engineer language or legalese. Will the sports complex still be in Montgomery?
Yes. Yeah, it, everything, basically, it's, everything's on the south side of Jericho will be in Montgomery, and the sports complex will be in Montgomery.
Okay.
How much territory, after looking at the six parcels, it's written so small, I can't read the southernly part of the westernly kind of boundary. How big is this total six, six parcels? Is it like a half an acre or is it an acre or...
Yeah, it's just the length of the right-of-way along the frontage of the AU parcel. I can get you some specifics on that, but it's very small.
Very small, okay.
It's essentially the right-of-way in front of several parcels that...
Okay. Twenty feet.
...the frontage of the AU facility, so it has nothing to do with the AU property, so.
All right. Is there any objections to placing this on consent at a future meeting? All right, thank you. Is there any new unfinished business?
Yes. Since there's, I would like to nominate John Chevron for being the sole member of the community to stick it out this evening. Sorry, John, I had to point that out. I wanted to thank everybody for the board and Fox Valley Park District for sponsoring, co-sponsoring the Sunday in the Park event yesterday. In fact, I saw John and his son out there. It went really well. I would also like to thank EEI for their donation of the ice cream. It went really well. We ran out. I ran to the store and got a little bit more. Also, the Montgomery Police Department sent some folks out to show some presence and interact with the community, so we really appreciate it. And again, our public works, Dan and Adam, were out there and took care of everything, including when I had to ask them to, that the horses were out in the field and apparently took care of their business. So I just thank you to everybody that was involved for coming out and helping. And Penny for my, being a scooper.
Not of the horses.
No, she was an ice cream scooper. Dan was the other scooper.
Can't the horses do that before they leave home?
I just remind everybody that the Packers are practicing now, and that my dog, with all the scratches, has gained six ounces in the last two weeks, other than that, in case we want to talk more about dogs. But other than that, go ahead.
All right. Anything else from anybody? Yes, sir.
I'd like to make an announcement that's worth mentioning tonight. Illinois Route 31, Lake Street, is scheduled to be closed July 15th, which is a Saturday, through Sunday, July 23rd. So IDOT and the Burlington Junction Railroad can repair that rail crossing just north of Ockut Road or Webster Street in Montgomery. It's gonna be closed to all traffic, weather permitting. That is the timeframe that's scheduled. There's one caveat to it, however, since it's a state-let project, it's subject to possible postponement if the state can't reach a budget or at least pass a transportation bill. So those signs are gonna start going up to give advance warning to motorists that use that route. If we can't get something through at the state level, then those signs will be coming back down, and I'll pass along more information at that time. But the detour that's established has motorists taking Ockut to Orchard to Jericho, which is about six miles. On a good day, that's probably 15 minutes for most people. I'm expecting heavy congestion, so we're working with IDOT and the contractor to adjust some signaling adjustments, provide longer green times. I just want to get word out in every possible arena that I can to encourage people to plan ahead and start thinking about alternate routes during that week of July 15th through July 23rd.
Awesome. All right. If there's nothing else, Plan Commission for the sixth has been canceled. The next village board meeting will be July 10th at 7:00 PM. With that, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss litigation pursuant to five ILCS.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yay.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
She says yes. I say yes.
Trustee Heinz?
Yay.
All right.